The caller, regular board meeting, August 3, 2023, 3:30 PM. Daylight saving time, ISD 701, school board. I would welcome everybody here. That being said, we'll move to item two, pledge allegiance. Please stand if you wish.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, in his will, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to item three. It's a motion to approve the agenda. However, there's an addendum. It'll come underneath personnel. And it'll be item XI, or XI, I mean, and then XI, and then XI, I, and then YZ. And those will be read at the end of the personnel agenda here.
All motion.
Support.
Invite Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item four, a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item five, public comment.
There's none, Mr. Chair.
We have none. With that, we'll move to item six, personnel. Turn it over to Superintendent Rick.
Dave, you're Mr. Chair.
You're welcome.
Item A is a motion to accept the resignation of Carl Sandnis as a Science Department Chair effective June 2, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item B is a motion to accept the resignation of Mike Thien as junior high football coach effective August 4, 2023.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item C is a motion to accept the resignation of Thomas Bitman as junior high football coach effective August 4, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion?
Did either of these junior high go up to the high school level, or did they just compete the over the program?
Let's go to the expert, Mr. Turner.
So both of them have students in other districts that are going to be playing, so they just stepped down. And yeah, but they didn't do it in a timely manner. Let's just say. I'll leave it at that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item D is a motion to accept the resignation of Alicia Reinhardt as junior high volleyball coach effective August 4, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director Duarte. Any discussion?
I had received an email from her. I don't know if anybody else did. I did speak to...
I did.
Okay. I did speak to Mr. Turner about it, and I just wanted to acknowledge that, you know, her concerns around this were addressed, and I, again, had dealt just one-on-one with Mr. Turner with that.
Thank you. I also got that, and I checked into it. Followed proper protocol throughout the whole thing, and everything was done right, so there was... Then Superintendent Rick told me that this was coming, so. Wish you well. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item E is a motion to accept the resignation of Holly Reawards as pupil support assistant, Lincoln Elementary, effective August 7, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
By Director Duarte, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item F is a motion to accept the resignation of Carrie Athaut as a pupil support assistant, Greenhaven Elementary, effective August 10, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item G is a motion to accept the resignation of Amy Fearing as the Business Manager's Secretary effective August 18, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Duarte, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item H is a motion to approve the hiring of Pamela Rainey as the Business Manager's Secretary effective August 7, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item I is a motion to accept the resignation of Pamela Rainey as a constable clerk effective August 7, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Duarte, was it?
No.
Whoa. Director McGlaughlin is supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item J is a motion to accept the resignation of Karen Caligiri as a pupil support assistant, Greenhaven Elementary, effective August 14, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Duarte. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item K is a motion to accept the resignation of Raymond Pierce Jr. as the head boys wrestling coach effective August 14, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion?
Is this the Pierce from last... Okay, same one.
He's been our head coach for a number of years, yes, and he just recently resigned.
Yeah, because we had Mr., was it Wojciechowski step in, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the same Pierce.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item L is a motion to accept the resignation for the purposes of retirement from Cal Brown Career Academies and Work-Based Learning effective August 28, 2023.
So moved.
Support. Moved by Director Polter, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion?
Do we have a plan with no, with the Career Academies?
Um, so this piece, I needed to accept Mr. Brown's resignation, and tomorrow, we're meeting to kind of come up with a game plan. I think, I believe, is there a meeting at the high school also? Is Mr. Brown coming, or?
No. I've heard absolutely nothing.
Okay. Mrs. Secora sent out a message the other day, I think to Mr. Brown, saying if he was available on Thursday, and also said if you could be available. But I don't think he replied back yet.
Yeah, I don't think I got an email. I haven't seen anything.
But I know she does want to get him in and talk to him and include you in that conversation also.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item M is a motion to approve Deborah Langenke to serve a one-year term as Science Department Chair beginning with the 2023-2024 school year.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item N is a motion to approve the hiring of Mandy Husco as JV volleyball coach effective August 14, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion?
Did we ever issue in the past about having administrators be coaches and stuff? Did we change policy on that?
I think we had it with head coaches, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe we said, you know, JV coach, and then it would really be on a case-by-case basis. And I've talked with Mandy and, I'm drawing a blank on the head coach's name. Lauren Peterson from Lincoln. I've talked with both of them, and Mandy is not going to miss any school as a result of this. They've worked out busking, they've worked out practices, so she's, she won't miss any time here as the schedule sits today. If they hit the playoffs or do something, that could change a little bit, but regular season, she won't miss any time. That's fine.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item O is a motion to approve the hiring of Jenna Stompahar to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, high school, effective August 16, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item P is a motion to approve the hiring of Brittany Kusak to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Lincoln Elementary, effective August 16, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Duarte. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item Q is a motion to approve the hiring of Kelly Nenadich to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Washington Elementary, effective August 16, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item R is a motion to approve the hiring of Corey Gonzalez to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Washington Early Learning Center, effective August 16, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item S is a motion to approve the hiring of Julie Sorensen to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Greenhaven Elementary, effective August 16, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Duarte, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item T is a motion to approve the hiring of Tanya Carlson to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Greenhaven Elementary, effective August 28, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Duarte, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item U is a motion to approve the hiring of Sophie Fink to job number 60, pupil support assistant, 30 hours per week, Washington Elementary, effective August 28, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Nyberg. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item V is a motion to approve the hiring of Lindsay Larick as Assistant Hematite Advisor, effective August 30, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Duarte, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item W is a motion to approve the employment agreement between ISD number 701 Hibbing and Charles Wagner as an Indian homeschool liaison for 30 hours per week, in addition to providing seven and a half hours per week for services to ISD number 695 Chisholm, effective September 5, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item X is a motion to approve the hiring of Tina Carlson as a 1.0 FTE K6 Interventionist Specialist, Lincoln Elementary, effective August 28, 2023.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director Nyberg, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
Item XI is a motion to accept the resignation of Tina Carlson as a 0.6 FTE Early Childhood Teacher, effective August 23, 2023.
So moved.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Duarte. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Item XI is a motion to approve the hiring of Matthew Anderson as a 1.0 Title Teacher, Lincoln Elementary, effective August 28, 2023. This is contingent upon being released from his current teaching contract in another district and receiving an out-of-field licensure from Minnesota Pelsby.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Director McGlaughlin, supported by Director Polter. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried.
All abstained.
That's Director Cho, Director Nyberg abstained, and abstention goes with the majority. Thank you, Quirrell. Okay?
I apologize, Mr. Chair. What did you name the last item? Y?
Z? The L, A, was going to be XI, and then XI, I, and then W, or Y, and then Z.
So this is, are we doing YZ at the end, or just Y? I'm sorry.
I thought YZ.
You're YZ.
I thought YZ too.
Item YZ is a motion to approve the hiring of Carole Hagan as a 0.25 FTE ELL teacher, district-wide, effective August 28, 2023. This is contingent upon receiving an out-of-field licensure from Minnesota Pelsby.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved by Director Duarte, supported by Director McGlaughlin. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carried. And I went through this thing a couple of times with the markings like that. It was just a test to see if people were paying attention.
Why didn't you make it so?
I still had it in my stuff.
Going forward, Mr. Berkowitz, was it possible to move hires and resignations instead of getting them, instead of reading through literally 26?
That's been discussed a while back here, and it was brought to my attention again. We're going to have a memo sent out by the superintendent explaining that, because the MSBA even says that it has to do sometimes not to get into things too deep. We have liability at the issues. So it was just a matter of approving those. We can do it that way, on a consent agenda. As far as the board goes, any item they see in there, we can just pull it for discussion after, so you don't have to agree on the whole, on everything. So we would do it that way. And I, most people areas, I think, do it that way, you know?
They do.
And it used to be the opposite.
And there's, you know, there's just a concern, you know, a lot of these are, a lot of these are confidential. And if they're just simply approved, and there isn't a bunch of discussion about the circumstances, that's one thing. But I'm just, I'm nervous sometimes when, you know, some of the information that's related to me that's private about why a person might be going, and it's a confidential process that I don't know. The board, unless the board is opposed to a hire or would be opposed to a resignation, I don't know that a board would ever say no to a resignation, maybe as a...
I don't think we have much of a choice.
Correct. And the hire, like Mr. Berkowitz said, if there were 10 items, and there was one that you had a concern about and wanted to talk, we could pull that one out and individually discuss it if the rest are a yes for you, so.
And we don't normally get 26 hires and resignations at one time, but we spend a solid 20 minutes on it.
And the next couple, the next packet is bigger than this one. The September 6 packet is larger, so it's... I will, I'll do a little bit of research. I'll get a little bit of some recommendations, both from the school's attorney and from MSBA, and I'll send a message.
And then you can solicit comments from the board.
Before we change it.
Right, yes.
Because I think years ago, we talked about it, didn't we like seeing everyone else hired? I think board members said, we kind of like seeing who we're hiring in the district.
It'll still see it.
You'll see it.
It'll still be there.
It'll be in different places.
So in order to be transparent to our community, on the consent agenda, will it just say that we approve the consent agenda, or will there be someplace where it delineates that? So if a member of the community wants to see who's...
Well, it'll be the same as this is, right here.
Yep.
It'll just be under here. It's always in there.
It's all public record.
So where does the public find the consent agenda if they want to get into detail?
It's right here.
Well, I know it's right there. Is it, they'd have to go online and then look at our agenda?
Yeah, just wherever they go.
Pop up the agenda, wherever they go. And our agenda's online, I'm assuming.
Right.
Bardomian. Well, I know it's here. I know it's here, but it's online, right?
Yes.
Yeah, if we get good comments, positive comments, I don't see any reason why we would, but we can try it for a meeting too and see how that goes.
Well, I'll get you the information and...
For this reading, you might try it every... And if you don't like it, read the last time we did that.
Okay.
Okay, good discussion. Are we finished with that?
That's all my items. I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Not a problem. With that, we'll move to item seven, administrative reports. Item A, directors' meeting.
I was just, I had a question, I guess. Where are we at with the Boys and Girls Club director hiring? Kevin Olken?
I do. For the branch director, there is an offer that was extended yesterday, and there will be, supposed to be an answer by the end of the week. We had an offer and an acceptance, and that person changed their mind because their current employer countered offer.
Oh.
So, but there was another offer extended yesterday.
Okay. And were we able to get the pay rate up at all? The pay, what it was?
There was a little bit of flexibility, but because they're part of a larger system, they had to stay within certain parameters.
But we were able to up a little? Yeah. We're talking about the job that Kelly got. Kelly...
Well, Kelly was just filling in on an interim basis.
Oh, she was filling in?
Yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, she was just, she was just filling in. She was the lead youth development programmer, and she stepped in before we entered the branch director and left.
So do we have someone doing the lead programmer?
The lead YDP. I haven't heard who they're going to have fill in, or who they're going to hire.
Okay, so that's an open type spot, too?
I can't speak to that. I don't know if it's open, or they're promoting somebody that's a current YDP into the lead position.
Oh, okay. Probably.
I guess.
Yeah.
I have some questions for you. And this kind of goes back to our last board meeting and the article in the paper. So we approved the contract with Minnesota North College. So my question about this was, is this the only contract that we had to vote on? Because that's the only school, college that we have students doing PSEO in? Because really, there's 60-plus schools, colleges, universities, private colleges that they can do PSEO at, not just this. So, but this is the only one that we have students attending.
Yes, so if we had, if we had a student, say for instance that, maybe they wanted to go to the Maine U. I don't even know if that's an option. Let's say they wanted to go to the Maine U as PSEO. We would have to have a separate agreement with the Maine U.
Okay.
Or the university system, if it was UMD, Maine U. Yes. We'd have to have a separate agreement for each one.
For each one, okay. And then my other question was regarding the article in the paper about it, is it's quoted that Mrs. Secora said that there's 50 to 70 students enrolled in PSEO. But I asked for those numbers in April, and going back to 2021, 2022, up till now, the range was anywhere from 70 to 100. So where did she get the 50 to 70 when that's not even close to the 70 to 100 that are?
I don't know. Unless, unless the question was, you know, how many full-time equivalents we have? Because we have, you know, a bunch of students that are part-time. So it could have been, I know Maurice here, I don't know if that sort of question was posed, but that's the only thing I could think. I don't know where that number would come from otherwise.
I know when I worked at HCC over the years, it was always, whenever I asked how many PSEO came from Hibbing, it was always, they were telling me about 50. They always said that. Now, I don't know if that was full-time equivalent, or I don't know.
There's, there's many more than that.
No, yeah, that, I mean, that was a while back. But they all take varying credits, right?
Yes. Yeah.
I mean, the first week of school, she would have a very accurate number of exactly how many full-time equivalents are PSEO. So I can find that number for you, if you'd like it. But probably, probably have to wait till the first week of school, till everything's finalized, and the dust settles, and we know where people are going, and...
Well, I mean, I, yeah, that would be great. I guess I just, the range was so far up, even if you looked back to the, you know, last two years, not even counting this year, like where that would be. You know, because there was, I felt like in the paper, it was low on PSEO, and then the number for the SITs classes was high in the 300s, but there wasn't note that those were duplicated. Students were counted as duplicates in that number, because if they took a different SITs class, it was counted in that. So I guess I just was hopeful that the numbers would have been more accurate on both sides, both PSEO and SITs, because again, we offer both, and we have students doing both. But, so I was just curious.
Is it due after your... When's the last date you could apply for that? It might change again, or?
Well, you had to, you had to give notice by the end of May, I believe, if you're going PSEO. But what I'm wondering, you know, things change over the summer. Kids come and go, kids change their plans, change their minds. So I think that first week of school, that first board meeting, may have an accurate number. It might take a couple of days, but I can get you exactly where it's at.
Do you have an update? I know when we met as a finance committee, you had made the comment that Mrs. Secora was looking into those extra SIT classes where they could earn the AA here. Do you have an update on that, if that ever came about?
I, well, I think we, and I don't want to misquote myself or say something wrong, but I believe we're, for a two-year degree...
Yes.
It's possible for a ninth grader to get a two-year degree here through our SITs courses. It would take some creative scheduling, and it might, you know, but it's possible. That's what Renee shared with me a month or so ago.
Okay.
That'd be ideal, because then we'd keep them on campus.
Absolutely. And if we could get into some type of, you know, sharing staff or sharing students with Chisholm, and if they could help with some areas maybe that we can't fill, and rather than duplicating each other, who knows what we could do. Could really be exciting.
Related to that, then, are SITs classes are all offered by Minnesota North Colleges, not UMD, or any... Because we used to have some offered by UMD.
We have some from UMD, some from Minnesota North. I mean, I think kids can take SITs courses that are aligned with ATASC and other community colleges.
Which is Minnesota North, but...
Correct.
But do we have them in agreement? Because I haven't seen us voting on like the, for the UMD SITs class. Or don't we get into agreement on that?
There should be. I thought we did.
I believe we did reach that.
Our UMD...
Oh, we did, okay.
You know what? I just want to add, and I think there was one piece of that article that I think that was missing, in my opinion. I think it's the article you're referring to. As a school district, we don't have a choice. I mean, that's a state statute. Our students have to have that opportunity to take classes, PSEO.
Right.
And so that contract that's in place, and I give credit to our superintendent when he came in. I mean, having the contract in place really causes our district to lose less money than it would if we didn't have that contract in place. Particularly the way it's structured now, when Rick came in, is if students are taking more than 15 credits at the college, or yeah, PSEO credits at Minnesota North under the contract, then the college is paid directly from the Department of Education. If they're taking 15 or less, we're paying the college, because what we pay the college is less than we would lose if we didn't have that provision in the contract. I don't know if that makes sense, but we would lose more if we lost our average daily membership if we didn't have that contract and that provision in there. So we close...
I explained that to the Tribune about the fact that we don't have a choice. And she, she did print that part, and they didn't give it a whole background detail.
Yeah, so we don't have a choice.
You have to.
I was just going to say, to answer your question, Mrs. Secora had put in an email... I'm sorry, I was just gonna say to answer your question, Mrs. Secora had put in an email, we work with LSC, which is Lake Superior College, I believe.
Yes.
I don't know who CLC is.
Central Lakes.
Okay, Central Lakes College, UMD, and Minnesota North College for SITS. So I, she.
Okay, so then we must have contracts with all those.
Yeah, and I don't remember.
Most are responsible, right?
And we do, we do.
Oh, we do, yeah.
There's a, there's a tuition agreement that goes between the two. I lost my train of thought where I was going. I apologize, but. Sorry, I lost it.
The SITS ones, I mean, really, I think that's more advantageous to our school district because if it's with a Minnesota, a Minnesota State College school, our school district pays that college $3,000 for that course. And there can be three students sitting in there, so we're not paying per credit.
Yeah, it's a much economical, much more.
That's why, that's why I was quoted as saying I'm in favor of SITS versus PSEO. I've got flak for it, but I've spoken of that.
But we, we have, we can't tell our students that no, you can't take.
Oh, no, and I know, I know, yeah, of course.
But, but by voting no for that agreement, it would actually end up being more detrimental to our school district.
Yeah, I did it philosophically, you know, as I'm against it philosophically.
Explain that, there's a lot of details behind that.
But let me, I just want to say one more thing with PSEO. Those students need to take our Minnesota State tests. This is another issue. Those are some of our brighter students, the PSEO students that go to college. A lot of them don't want to come back and take our standardized Minnesota tests, which skews our results down. HIBIN's results down because now our smartest kids aren't taking our standardized tests.
Sure.
So I mean, just so we're all aware of that.
Can we make them?
That's what my question is.
No, you can outtell them.
Can we require, can we give incentive? Can we give an incentive to come sit down and take the test?
Possibly.
The other thing, once you get the scores out there, you can put an asterisk or something. Does not include those people.
Well, you could, but our scores don't reflect on our whole district.
I was saying, part of the explanation, but it doesn't include this bunch of students, not just in general.
I don't know if we do that or not, but it really bothers me that our smartest kids are not being included. But yet all our special art kids are, of course.
I think the toughest thing with the MCAs, and you know, just with my own children and talking with their friends and when they, you know, when they were younger, the MCA just doesn't mean anything to a high school student. There's no.
I know it doesn't.
There's no T.
But it does for our district.
Correct, but I'm just, for, for a junior.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
Absolutely, they don't want, they don't care about it.
And, you know, maybe focused on, you know, ACT or something.
Yeah.
No, there's, there's no incentive, there's no.
Yeah.
Well, in fact, probably to the contrary, because if we've got students at the college taking PSEO classes, you know, they have to be in class, and when are the standardized tests being offered here?
I have, I know teachers that will schedule special sessions for testing around the PSEO students. They'll, they'll say, you know, I'll accommodate you. What's a good time for you? They still don't want, they still don't maybe want to come.
And the counselors always reach out to our PSEO students and whatever, know what the testing is, and, you know, they're interested, but.
But they're not interested. So we're losing almost high test scores. That's my point.
True.
Yeah.
True.
Okay. I just, I think it'd be awesome if we could figure out an incentive or something to entice them to take those.
Sure, something to think of, sure.
Something to think, something to think about. Food for thought, right?
See what other districts.
Yeah.
What's a GP requirement for PSEO now?
I think it's 3.5 as a junior and 3.0 as a senior, I believe.
Somebody told me the other day, I thought it was, that's why I'm asking it, I wasn't sure. Somebody told me they dropped it to 2.5.
Oh, I don't know. Maybe for seniors. I think it's higher for the lower, you know, if you're a 10th grader, right?
I thought it was 3.5 for, for juniors and then 3.0 for seniors.
Oh, 3.0 for seniors, okay.
Was it one time too, like even the top certain percent, like either 10% of your class, or top 30% of your class, I think it was?
Like top third when you were a junior, the top, the top half when you were a senior.
Yeah.
Which I ask because I, I always see the negative in a lot of things. And that's what I see with some of the families that I know that have had their kids take PSEO and struggle. And when they struggle, you know, we've all been to college, you get two grades per semester. And if you blow it, you fail. You don't get the attention of a teacher in college, they get from a high school student. I've heard nightmare stories from parents who say that their kid almost didn't graduate because they're short of credits because they failed English class or math class at college, so that they don't get the credit here. And there's really no monitoring of that. I was just curious, have you studied this? Have you looked at it and say, maybe our rules are a little lax?
Well, I think, you know, there's, there's an interesting study group out there that I've kind of been watching and paying attention to, this dual enrollment piece as opposed to PSEO or SITS. I know you, we had talked a little bit about it.
Yeah, and I went on the webinar, the workshop for that too. Actually, I was the only one who was in it. So I had a one-on-one with the lady. It was interesting.
But it's, it's an interesting concept, right? It's, the college is more your partner than your adversary or your competitor. And so I, I hope that's, that's where this goes. I mean, because the SITS piece, if we had more involvement with the college instructors and the SITS courses, I mean, that would just be a win for our staff, be a win for the kids. It would be. And just pitting us against one another is, and, and everybody is, you know, trying to survive. They're just, we're trying to stay afloat, just like the college is trying to stay afloat.
Jeff, I agree with you, and I think I'm gonna come back to when we do the registration session for parents. I think just on the surface, parents see it as an opportunity to get two years of college education for free. And it's a big financial incentive, but there's a lot of potential risk. And I think the other thing is, as a high school, we don't have to take those students back if they aren't successful in their courses. But I think a lot of times, many of the high schools are scrambling in May to try to do credit recovery where a student was not successful in PSEO and to try to get them through to meet the graduation requirements. But I don't know, it works great for a lot of students, and it's not great for a lot of students.
And I think, you know, I pick my kids for a school, it costs a lot more now than it did in the westerns or our kids here. But the financial means, it's not always the perfect, that's not always the reason your kids should be taking PSEO. If your kid is really bright, yeah, go for it. But if your kid is just like trying to slide through high school and he happens to pull a 3.0, not that difficult for most students, it really isn't. And then you get to the college, you don't have a counselor or a teacher poking you saying, you gotta get that grade up. Because there are no grades to get up. You don't have to show up for class. There's no attendance taken for most classes. And I just hear nightmare stories from parents where like, the kid gets up at like 11 o'clock, and you've got a college class at noon or, you know, another one at 2:00, and they don't go to class. Parents are at work. It's just, it's just too, it's not disciplined enough for a lot of students. And then we pay the price when we have to try other services to help those kids get the graduation date.
Well, not only that, you know, that's on their college transcript, right? So there's the academic success, but you also have to make satisfactory academic progress. So now they want to go to college, their, their first true year in college, right, where they're not PSEO. And if they've set themselves up just right, they're probably on academic probation, academic, or financial aid probation, financial aid suspension if they're not successful. So even though we think we're helping them, you have to really look at the long-term piece of it.
I just worry about these kids, I mean socially, that they're being dumped into a place where kids are significantly older, more mature.
Well, we have people say that go to 70 years old.
That's true. That's true.
But I think, I think that just putting together, and I, and I've attended here, and it's the college advisors that come and put on that piece of it. But I think just having parents understand the acronym of all the different programs and what it really means, and try to maybe have our staff in and just kind of balancing out what they're hearing from the college side would be a good thing too. And, and maybe promoting a little bit more of college in schools, the SITS piece.
Do we not participate when the college comes over to talk about PSEO?
Oh, we participate.
We do?
Definitely.
Okay. So you're just saying maybe this little stronger message from our side?
Yeah, just what we're.
About the, maybe the potential on calls and, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's.
Pros and cons, I guess.
Pros and cons, yeah. And parents, I mean, it is hard to convince them that it's not all pro, because it's free.
Well, and then the other.
That's the big, that's why they do it.
The other thing is, we have, I mean, like sometimes we don't have kids in school, but we have kids that have been through school.
Yeah.
And have taken college classes. And so unless you really have a plan and know where you're going, those credits may count, they may not count, they may count as electives. So, yeah, it's good to have the rigor if you're gonna have the rigor and really do well, but you have to have a plan and you have to know where you're going and kind of work backwards, and then it may be advantageous.
Now, do we, if the, do we go by grade? Like if they get a D in a college class, does that count for our credit still here?
Oh, yes.
It does, so any passing grade?
Yes.
I mean, they don't need, need to get like a C and above or whatever.
No, just passing.
Could be D, C, B, or A.
Okay.
I was just thinking about that the other day.
And I know their credits are different than ours, and there's a formula that the counselors do, and sometimes there's gaps, that kids have to take a quarter credit here or that.
Yeah, as long as they pass.
Yes, yep.
Okay, good discussion. Anything else?
On directors' reports?
Right.
Yeah, I'd like to kind of spin up on that and just say, you know what? We're students in high school once, right? And I had an opportunity last week, last Wednesday, I attended the High School Activities Fair. We have so many great opportunities in our school. And it was athletics, academics, the arts, that I was so impressed that I encouraged our students to really participate walking through there. I mean, it was not only what we have to offer, but you could just feel the excitement. You know, the advisors, the coaches, whoever was at those tables. There's just so many good things. You're a young person once, like enjoy it. Take advantage of the opportunities our school district has to offer. So thank you to our athletic director for coordinating that and our principal. It was an awesome event.
I think it was a great turnout. I had to attend two meetings myself, but I saw in the auditorium, the library, and the gym just how many students and parents attended, and it was a good turnout. So you did an excellent job.
And on, and on the flip side of that, earlier this week, I think it was, or maybe last week, I attended an MSBA webinar, and it was about looking at the demographics of our state. So that unfortunately was a little bit, not quite as exciting news for, for greater Minnesota. It was Megan Dayton, and she was looking at the demograph, demographics, the birth, the death, the migrations. And unfortunately for us in greater Minnesota, our pop, the population segment that's increasing is those over 65 years old. So our student population, our workforce population is declining. And I guess, you know, all I can say is I'm proud to be on this school board, being able to offer the things we are and seeing the enrollment increase since June, or the projected enrollment increase. I think we're approaching our decisions in the right way to set ourselves up for longer-term success in a situation, in a, in a time of declining enrollment in greater Minnesota. So, you know, kudos to all of us for having the foresight to do the things we're doing and create the opportunities in a fiscally responsible way. So it was pretty.
It looks like our enrollment, like you and I were talking about, was higher than we thought.
It looks, it looks today that, you know, that on June 1st or 2nd, or whatever the date was, that number were probably up between 16 and 80 from what walked out the door.
That's incredible. I can't even believe it. Yeah. Maybe we're slowly recovering from all the, you know, COVID stuff.
Going in redirections.
The whole homeschooling and all that kind of stuff, yeah.
Well, and just, you know, just cautiously optimistic.
Cautiously, yeah.
There's a couple of weeks left, and some families, you know, haven't even made that decision yet. They won't even make the contact till next week, so.
Yeah.
Well, and hopefully some of the families that are just kind of on the bubble, again, I encourage anybody to contact our activities director, our school. Just being able to hire people in that same webinar when they said there's basically two jobs for every person. We've been able to hire really qualified faculty and staff. And so I think anybody that's thinking about enrolling or re-enrolling their kids at our school should really get on board and do it because we offer a good thing here.
Yeah, absolutely. I agree. One more comment, John, about the activities Kim was talking about. I like it that I'm seeing a message to students, I hope the students are getting this, that you can be in a play and do a sport. You know, I don't know, Keith, if you're all, all your activities people are putting that out there, but I think it's important that our schools shrink, so we never had to worry about it when I was in school. But as our number of kids shrink and the number of kids in activity shrink, the kids need to know they can do both. They can do music and sports. They can do theater and sports. You know, you don't have to just do sports or just do music. So I, I like that. I saw, I think I saw on Facebook or somewhere.
That's good out there. That's been Megan Zubich and Megan, I'm trying to remember.
Reynolds.
Reynolds, yeah.
Yeah, they've been doing a nice job incorporating and talking to our sports teams and all that work around their schedules. And then they've even incorporated some of the elementary schools into some of our performances, so.
Yeah, I love that, because like we discussed last spring, our theater might be the thing that we can really, you know, try to grow and try to make, we stand out in the crowd from all the other surrounding high schools and stuff, so.
And you know they, they accept school board members.
To the theater?
Yeah, just so you know.
It's kind of my, it's kind of my dead dream.
Yes.
I never did it much in high school.
And so was Mr. Turner. He had more lines than I did, though. I don't know why, but.
Well, you know, and the other thing that I thought was funny, talking to Megan Zubich, was they decided on what play they were gonna do last spring. I think they had some of the tryouts, so some of the students have been working all summer in trying to get their parts and their lines and whatever else they have to do down.
Nice. Yeah, I love it. I hope down the road we can talk more about staff in the theater too. But that's, that's for another day, but.
Sure.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, we'll move to item B, administrators and staff.
We, we don't have any reports today, Mr. Chair.
Okay, well.
They actually, if I could just throw in a little plug, all of our administrators, or most of the administrators are in Duluth today for crisis drill training, the ALIS training, that they're, they're all down there taking part in that today, so.
Okay, yeah, and yesterday they had some training at the World's Best Workforce over at the service.
Yes, yes.
Okay, committee reports. Just a quick update on the collaborations. Our next meeting is September 27th, I believe.
I believe, yes.
And then negotiations are still being hammered out, like the four representative agreements with, with that. So things are in progress, so.
Yes.
But, okay, well, thank you. And with that, we'll move to item A, administrative business. And if I may here, we'd like to take items C through I, so everybody knows in the audience and the TV, that these are, we'd like to take them as one motion. These are from the state that we can't do anything about. We just have to, we can't change it or anything. Just motion to approve.
So.
We've escorted, great work done, and great culture. Any further discussion? We can pull some if there's something, looks like somebody wants, but can all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go with the same sign.
Aye. And really, it's only on two of them, on C and D.
On which ones?
I'm sorry?
Which ones did you say?
Uh, C and D.
Kirk Hillen?
S and D.
Okay, we pull those.
And again, it's from the state. It doesn't, you know, our vote, it is a yes anyway, but, you know, because of what you stated before. But when I looked at these, this is where my interpretation of some of the items highlighted in red, which were the changes.
say to me that this is where that critical race theory fits in. And I, I don't support critical race theory being in our curriculum, but again, that's from the state, but I just wanted to make note of that.
Well, thank you. Are you done with that one, Mark?
I'm sorry?
Are you done with that one? Or do you want to comment down?
C and D?
Yeah.
That, that was just my comment on those two.
Oh, okay, so you're, we can take them all at one time then?
Wait, no, she voted no, right?
No on C and D, but yes on all of the other ones.
Okay, and you don't want any further discussion on C and D or just what you said?
Just what I said.
Okay.
So the state is putting critical race theory on them? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying when I look at the red in these two, that, when I read it, that is my interpretation.
That the state is putting critical race theory into the curriculum?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't read it that way, but whatever.
I'm sure that's, there'll be further discussion, but some groups on that, so.
Sure.
Okay, thank you for that. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go the same side. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, Alex, any?
Chair, we'll go with that, sit.
We're going back to you.
Yeah, this was C through I.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is a motion to approve the resolution to accept donations on board?
That's a part.
Support by Director Poulter, supported by Director Weber. Any discussion?
Are you going to read it?
Yes. One second. We are accepting $175,000 donations from Tammy Gethis to support the charity. Very nice.
That is some. Her son's on the football team and all that, and the basketball team, I think.
Okay. $175,000.
Yeah. That's going towards the new store.
Or, yes, flower.
Right, correct.
Correct.
Yeah, make him a quarterback. That's a very nice thing that the family.
That's amazing. A family, yeah.
I think a letter from the board.
Yeah.
To thank her for that donation.
I absolutely think so.
Absolutely.
They did not have to do that, thank you.
Maybe a little more people or something, if she's old people.
Yeah, you got to check and make sure, depends on what kind of publicity. Check with local high schools, you could.
Well, we can work on that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go the same side. Motion carried, thank you.
Item J is a motion to approve the Europe trip for students in June 2025 and to allow Mr. Murfeld the use of school email and space at the school to organize the trip.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go the same side. Motion carried, thank you.
And item J is a motion to approve the Europe trip for students in June 2025 and to allow Mr. Murfeld the use of school email and space at the school to organize the trip.
Cheryl.
Support.
Supported by Director McGlaughlin. And this was done in the past, so it's nothing new to us, it's just, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Go the same side. Motion carried, thank you.
And item K is a motion to go into closed session to review the tentative negotiated achieving contract.
Support by Director Poulter, supported by the board chair. Any discussion?
Could I add one, maybe just a suggestion that we, that we amend the motion to discuss the Hugh contract and the Asmi contract. We have tentative agreements for both. And that, that happened since the patent is went out, I apologize.
With that, we'll recess into closed session. When we come out, there won't be any action taken. These are two, this is all tentative between the two groups and the school board, so we'll take action at a different time when it's appropriate. So with that, we'll recess to closed session at 4:25.